As the guests are arriving, I request all the participants to kindly stand from your seat. As a sign of respect for our guests, I request all the participants to kindly stand from your seat and welcome with a good clap. And in the meantime, I request all the respected sisters to kindly take your seat. Sister, please take your seat. Sister, you may kindly sit in the left side of the stage, which is in the left side of the announcing board. Kindly take your seat.
Let's give a loud clap as our chief guest arrives. The guest of honors accompanied by the principal and all the dignitaries, Reverend Father Stephen Tautang, the parish priest and everyone. A louder clap please as they arrive. All the principals of each individual schools are kindly requested to come and take your place at the dice.
Information, student leaders from, all the student leaders, if you are here kindly report and come over the dice. Student leaders, if you are here, kindly come over the dice.
May I request all the student leaders, the parents who have come to kindly take their place at the dice.
May I request everyone to be seated. A very good morning to one and all present here today. On behalf of Catholic Schools Board LAMCA and Faculty of Don Bosco Higher Secondary School, I extend a very warm welcome to each and every one of us gathered here on the inaugural function of the Students' Orientation Come Games and Sports Meet 2024. In order to start our today's program, may I now invite Reverend Father Pravil Karkata, VC, intent, summoned to invoke God's blessing. On behalf of Father Pravil, may I call Father Robert to invoke God's blessing.
Let us rise. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, a reading from the letter to the Hebrews, chapter 12. My son, do not disdain the discipline of the Lord, or lose heart when reproved by him. For whom the Lord loves, he disciplines; he scourges every son he acknowledges. Endear your trials as discipline; God treats you as sons. They disciplined us for a short time, as seemed to write them; but he does so for a benefit, in order that we may share his holiness. At the time, all discipline seems a cause not for joy, but for pain; yet later, it brings the peaceful right of righteousness to those who are trained by it. So strengthen their drooping hands and their weak knees, strive for peace with everyone, and for that holiness without which no one will see the Lord. Let us close our eyes. God, a heavenly Father, we praise and thank you for adding another day into your given life. We thank you for all the blessings that you have endowed upon each one of us. This morning, Lord Jesus, we seek your mighty blessings upon all the organizers, the parents, teachers, students, and all those who are involved in these competitions, in this orientation program. Lord, you be the beginning, you be the end. As we keep the feast of the holy guardian angels, may your angels be with us, in front of us, beside us, above us, all around us, that all that we do be for your greater glory, as you have told us in 1 Corinthians, chapter 10, verse 31. Whatever you do, whether you eat or you drink, or whatever you do, do it for the greater glory of God. Lord Jesus, help us to undergo this life of discipline, to make our family, our church, our society great, for your greater name, for your greater glory. We make this prayer to Christ, our Lord, in the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit.
Thank you Reverend Father Robert SDB. May I request everyone to be seated.
A word of hearty welcome is the sweetest of all things in life. May I now invite Reverend Father Stephen Beatty, Principal of Don Bosco Higher Secondary School LAMCA, to deliver a welcome speech.
A very good morning, dear dignitaries, staff, the students and parents of different schools. We thank God in the first place for enabling us to begin and inaugurate the Catholic Schools Board LAMCA Come Games and Sports. I'm very privileged to stand here to welcome our dignitaries in the name of Don Bosco High Secondary School, the host school, and also in the name of the other nine schools who are participating for this first and most appreciated and most awaited program that we have arranged. As a principal of this school, it's my privilege also to welcome the awardees of the academic and meritorious awardees of different schools, their parents, and especially their students. We would like to congratulate them and we would like to welcome them. Dear Pu S. Khai Kupao Ngaiti, the chief guest of today's program, we are indebted to you for willingly accepting our invitation. May I request you to please stand and receive a token of appreciation from the organizing committee. Pu S. Khai Kupao Ngaiti is the EDC in charge of the Moldrum, and then also he is just now the person who is ready to help us and also most ready to come to the school, to Don Bosco, and also to interact with the students. And that's why we invite the same, please give me a round of applause to sir. Next, we have Reverend Father Dr. Stephen Tautang, the parish priest of Good Shepherd Parish. May I request Father to please stand and accept a token of appreciation. Reverend Father Dr. Stephen Tautang is now the principal of Don Bosco School Tingkang Pai and also is the parish priest of Good Shepherd Parish, under which the Don Bosco School is. In the Catholic Church, the parish is first and comes the school. So the school, the institution comes under the parish, and Father is the parish priest of this Good Shepherd Parish. Thank you, Father. Please let us give him a round of applause to Father. Next, we have our guest of honor, Pu Duitang Guite, sir. Please. Sorry, Gangte. Sorry, I'm so sorry. Sir Pu Guite Gangte. He is the first bat of Don Bosco, 1971, '72 bats. So there, sir, we welcome you to this great event that you have willingly accepted our invitation. So please let us give a round of applause to sir. At the same time, at the same time, we also request the first bats, those who have accompanied sir, to please stand in your own places. We would like to acknowledge your presence, that all those first Bosconian bats, these are the great heroes and heroines of our school. Don Bosco Institution had been because of these great personalities. So may I also request the organizing committee to accept, to present them as such. Let us give them a round of applause to the first Bosconian bats. We are also privileged to have the principals, the headmasters, administrators of the nine schools, and also the LAMCA Private School Association. If you are there, please do stand in your own places so that we can honor you with CSBL, SAS. May I request the headmasters, the principals, to kindly stand and receive a token of appreciation. Please let us give the round of applause to all our principals, administers, and also the headmasters. May I request if any principal or headmaster, headmistress are seated on the other side, please do come and occupy the dice. Thank you, dear principals, for accepting our invitation, and it's all because of your great and generous contributions and support that this program is possible. We are also happy to have our sister superiors of different convents, of the different congregations. Dear sisters, thank you for supporting us in various capacities that you had for us. Dear PPC members of the parishes of the schools, thank you for your presence and thank you also for supporting us in kinds, in cash, or whatever, for the success of this program. Next, we have and also welcome our VA Chairman of Salem Veng. If he is there, may I also please welcome him into the dice. VA Chairman of Salem Veng. And we thank you, at least he had accepted our invitation and maybe he has got some other programs. At the same time, we are also grateful to him. It is because of Salem Veng that we are able to have this institution and the program that we conducted is under this Salem Veng. We are also happy to have Chairman of Changkon Village, if he is there. May I also, Father Sami, please. Father Sami, please, the principal of Saint Dominic's School and also the parish priest of Saint Mary's Parish. Let us also give him a round of applause to Father Sami. Can we present him bats in the SAS? We are also happy to welcome the presidents of JSF, KSO, and JSP. If you are there, please kindly occupy the dice. If the students organization, the JSF, the KSO, and the JSP, if you are there, please do come to the dice and occupy your seats. May I request the teachers to also present them SAS and the bats. Dear esteemed guests, the honorable chief guests, functional chief guests, guests of honor, today marks the beginning of an exciting journey that we had been waiting for. The Catholic Schools Games and Sports Come Students Orientation. I'm honored to welcome all of you to this great event, the mega event that we've been waiting for. This is the first event that the Catholic Schools Board LAMCA is organizing. It had been many years that we had Catholic education manipure. We had sports conducted in Saint Joseph, Catholic schools, and other places. But due to the prevailing situation, we are not able to conduct the combined sports of the Catholic schools. That's why we have, the principals of this area have come together, discussed, and made this day with lots of hiccups and lots of uncertainties of the time. And yet, today, I'm in a very special way grateful to God, we have the best weather of the year. I'm so grateful that morning, we were little bit of not so sure what will happen, but yesterday, therefore, yesterday, there was a heavy rain in the morning, but this day, today, 2nd of October, Mahatma Gandhi, Jayanti, the great father of the nation, and also the great day of the angels, the guardian angels. I think the Lord has heard our prayer, and all of us are enjoying this very beautiful morning. Welcome to Don Bosco Higher Secondary School, where talent meets passion and teamwork becomes triumph for the nine Catholic schools of Tengopel, to Tanlon, to Singat, Bihang, Monglen Pai, Twating Pai, Toibong, Salem Veng, Singat. It's a meet of all these students that we are able to conduct this program. To our visiting teams, the different schools, we are thrilled to host you and share this experience. And especially to our students, athletes, the coaches, the teachers, and the team managers, and the school captains, and most of all, the school authority, your hard work and dedication have led to this mega event. Over the next three days, you will demonstrate skill, strategy, and sportsmanship. Embrace the spirit of competition, but always remember, respect your opponents, support your teammates, honor your school's legacy. And this even celebrates more than just winning, but it's about building lifelong friendships, learning valuable life skills, and forging unforgettable memories. As we begin this day, once again, may I welcome all the dignitaries, their teachers, the principals, administrators, headmasters, the PPCs of different parishes, the parish priests, all the teachers, all the students, parents, to this great event. And I'm also grateful to many donors, though they are not able to be present here, they have contributed lots to the success of this great event of the CSBL. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you Reverend Father Stephen Beatty, the principal of Don Bosco High Secondary School LAMCA. Now, may I request everyone to kindly stand up. May I request everyone to kindly stand, and may I request our chief guest to kindly come forward for the hosting of the flight. Thank you very much, sir, for accepting our invitation. The theme song, please. Over to the commander for the inspection of the collagens. May I request everyone May I request everyone to please be seated. May I request our chief guest to kindly go for the inspection accompanied by Reverend Father Stephen Byde, the principal, Reverend Father Louis, the convener of the sports meet. The schools are Saint Peter's School, Monglenpai Zorvo, the Saint Joseph's School, Singat, Saint Mary's School, Bihang, Don Bosco Higher Secondary School Lamka, Saint Peter's School, Tengopal, Saint Mary's Higher Secondary School, Toibong, Saint Teresa's School, Duidanpai, Saint Xavier's School, Tanlong, and Don Bosco School, Dui Kangpai. Thank you, sir. Now, we have the lighting of the church. May I request all the torchbearers to kindly move forward. Torchbearers. May I request everyone to kindly clap your hands as the torchbearers are coming forward. It's a big occasion for all of us to come together. The First Catholic Schools Board Lamka Games and Sports Meet, 1st to 5th October 2024. I think we shall continue clapping. Let's encourage our young boys and girls who are coming. It's going to be a very encouraging thing for them. Torchbearers as they're coming. May I request our chief guest to kindly lead the line. Okay, let's give a loud clap as the torches are being lit. Now, may I request all the flagbearers to come forward for the oath taking. All the flagbearers. Over to the commandant for the march pass. This is going to be the first competition. Wishing all the students best of luck. Dear judges, please get ready.
Saint Peter's School Monglenpai, salutes to our chief guest. The commander is Thang Min Luen and flagbearer is Nae Hoikim. Followed by Saint Joseph's School Singat. Marching on the left, we have Saint Joseph's School Singat. Saint Joseph's School Singat Boys Contenance, salutes our chief guest. Commander is Thang Josua. Flagbearer is Ras Kumar. Followed by Saint Mary's School Behyang Boys Contenance. Saint Mary's Boys Contenance, salutes our chief guest. Commander is Paul Liang Siam and flagbearer is Paul Millun. Don Bosco Higher Secondary School Boys Contenance, salutes our chief guest. Commander is Gin Liang Lu Gang Ti and flagbearer Soi Hausong. Followed by Saint Mary's Higher Secondary School, Toibong. Saint Mary's Higher Secondary School, Toibong, salutes our chief guest. Commander is Nae Za Ha, flagbearer Thang Haus. Marching on the left, we have Saint Teresa's School Boys Contenance. Saint Teresa's School Boys Contenance, salutes our chief guest. Commander is Daniel Ngam Kholun Byte and flagbearer Sei Min Ha Haokip. Marching on the left, we have Don Bosco School Ting Kang Pai. Don Bosco School Ting Kang Pai Boys Contenance, salutes our chief guest. Commander is Thang Liang Lu and flagbearer Jam Son Mong. Marching on the next, we have Saint Peter's School Tengopal, Combined Board of Contenance. Saint Peter's School Contenance, they salutes our chief guest. Commander is Roba Thang Mang Ho Sa and flagbearer Thang Go Gin Mathe. Saint Joseph High School Singat, they salutes our chief guest. Commander Ning La Lo and flagbearer Jin Ha. Marching on the left, we have Saint Mary's School Behyang Girls Contenance. Saint Mary's School Girls Contenance, salutes our chief guest. Commander Nam Zo Kim and flagbearers Haung Ai Lun. Don Bosco Higher Secondary School Contenance, salutes our chief guest. Commander Jivya and flagbearer Lucy. Marching on the left, we have Saint Mary's Higher Secondary School, Toibong, Girls Contenance. Saint Mary's Higher Secondary School Girls Contenance, salutes our chief guest. Commander Marina, flagbearer Nam Za Lam. Marching on the left, we have Saint Teresa's School Girls Contenance. Saint Teresa's School Girls Contenance, they salutes our chief guest. Commander Bidiana and flagbearer Naotem Tothang. And we are coming to the last contingent, that is, Don Bosco High School Ting Kang Pai Girls Contenance. Don Bosco High School Ting Kang Pai, salutes our chief guest. Commander Olivia, flagbearer Naomi. Saint Javier School Contenance Salute our Chief Guest. Commander Simon Muammin Liang and Flag bearer Lam Go Lin. And this is the last contingent for today's march pass, combining both boys and girls.
It's really beautiful indeed. Very good marching. I'm sure the judges are going to have a tough time. You really did well. We would like to really thank our chief guest for receiving the salute.
Moving on, may I now invite your guests of honor, who is none other than a Bosconian family, Mr. Duitang Gangte, Retired Executive Engineer, First Batch Bosconian. Sir, the podium is yours.
Good morning, everyone. Respected Father Stefan Baithe, Chief Guest Mr. S. Khaihopao Adisi Munnuam, Reverend Father Stefan Tothang, Reverend Sister Mary Claire Headmistress, Don Bosco Higher Secondary School, and all the students have gathered here. Whenever I enter this complex, some emotion grips my heart and I feel as if I'm still the student of this Don Bosco. But... I'm delighted. And it's an honor for me to be here with you, to address you, our very talented and hardworking students of Don Bosco. This is a great day for you and I'm very happy to be sharing it with you. Today, I'm not going to speak as a chief guest, but an old student of this Don Bosco High School. As we were invited as a First Batch Bosconian, I would like to speak something about these First Batch Bosconian, who might not know the origin and how it came as First Batch Bosconian. Shall we go back to the year 1970? Seventy? For somebody, it might be an history. But I would like to narrate our past history. In those years, 1970, our school, our alma mater, used to be known as Don Bosco Junior High School. And that same year, 1970, we appeared for Class 8 Examination, which is at that time known as MSLC, Middle School Living Certificate. This was conducted by Manipool Board, all Manipool. As we appeared and the result was very good, as we all came flying in flying colors, we came out as flying colors, including five First Divisioners, which was very rare at the time. And as time passed by, our principal at the time, Father Joseph Mattham, who is no more with us, he expired on 16 July 2022 at the age of 96. He was our principal. And Mother George Mary, who is no more with us, and Sister Sefi Claire, Sister Santal Maria, and all other teachers who worked for our betterment. As the result was out, our teachers, principals, sisters, mothers, they were very happy with us. So they assured us that they'd open Class 9 only for the sake of us. So, in that year, 1971, the Class 9 students who registered, who was admitted as Class 9 students, we call ourselves the First Batch Bosconians. And as time, years passed by, it was time again for appearing in the matriculate, known as HSLC, Matriculation Examination. And since those days, our school was not recognized as a high school. So all the students appeared in the name of Vimla Raina High School. And the result also was astonishing. All 100% of us got through, including two First Divisioners. At that time, it was very rare also. So after graduation, from high school, all the mates, batchmates, went our own way, scattered to pursue higher education. But in 1984, some of our mates conceived the idea of having a get-together of classmates. And our dream was fulfilled in the year 1984, 14th April. That was when we got our first reunion, so to say. And we went to Kugadon for that purpose. And at that time, 16 of our batchmates joined the reunion with their families and children. That was the beginning of the first reunion. And the batch continued to have reunions at not regular intervals because all were busy working in the government jobs or somewhere, as a teacher also. So till now, I should say, in the year 2019, we had our last reunion, 10th reunion, so to say. We had our 10th reunion in the year 2019, 14th of October, at Mothboom. Why Mothboom? Because our mate, our First Batch Bosconian, Mrs. Dart Thang Pu, was married there and stayed there because... So we went to Mothboom and we did our first, no, the reunion, the 10th reunion. As time passed by, after 50 years of our still binding together or get-together, we celebrated our Golden Jubilee on 5th November 2021. That was our Golden Jubilee celebration. Most of us gathered there and the place was... We all thought that where should we celebrate? Then we all resolved that the place should be our old alma mater, the Don Bosco Junior High School, as we called them, at Pailin. Then we invited so many teachers, fathers, sisters, and some of them could come and some of them could not because our Father Joseph also, he was 95 years old, so he could not come. But he blessed us. And Father Divasi, he could come and blessed us and he spoke so many encouraging speeches. Though we are all now over 70-plus years, we are still 25 batchmates who are alive. And it is very sad to say that 10 of our mates have left us for the heavenly abode. But still, 25 of us are still alive, scattered in all the states. But 15 of us are still here in Lam Khaton. Though we are 70 years old, young, we are still planning to have our 11th reunion and it is coming near. I think it's on next month, November 5th, 2024, at Lunglay, Mizurum. Because seven of our mates are there, residing there. And they invited us, we should have our reunion here. So God willing, we are planning to have our reunion, 11th reunion, there at Lunglay, Mizurum. So please pray for us so that we can have a nice and all the members who are alive can join together and praise the Lord and sing our old Bosconian song at that time. Whenever we get together and have a meeting, we used to sing our old songs, that Bosconian songs. "We are Don Bosco children all, standing for just and fair." That song we used to sing. And lastly, but not the least, to conclude my speech, I would like to encourage all the students gathered here to hold on, continue the legacy of our alma mater and follow the footsteps of these First Batch Bosconians. And obey your teachers, your parents, and lastly, obey your Creator God, that will give you a long life, which is a lasting one. So I wish all of you a long and prosperous life. And I was also, when I see this, your parade, I came to realize that for some years, I also let my contingent in Don Bosco for few years. So it almost made me cry to see you. So may God grant you long life and good health. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your words of wisdom and encouragement. Moving on, may I now invite a functional president Reverend Father Dr. Stefan Tothang, Paris Pries Good suffered Paris Lam Ka, to take his time.
Respected Pu S. Khaihopao Ngaithe MCS, Chief Guest for today's function. Respected Pu Duitang Gangte, Guest of Honor, Executive Engineer, First Batch Bosconian. Father Louis Khong Sai, convener of this, the first Chiruchanpu District Catholic School Sports Meet. Dear fathers, dear sisters, special invitees, teachers, and also my dear students. Today, if we look at the education system in India, it has become so lopsided because the education system in India is testing only the head. Those who are good in memorizing, those who can retrieve from their memories all that they have memorized and put it down in the paper, gets good score. And what is start missing in our education system today is value education is no more. And another one is skill development. So psychomotor skills are never developed in students. That is why the Catholic schools in Chiruchanpu District, we are giving you this platform, this opportunity to build up your value system and especially the skill development. So therefore, this is one area we are focusing and that is why we're having this. Today, I have gone around almost all the states of North-East India and also other parts of India, conducting programs, motivation programs. and also other parts of India, conducting programs, motivation program and career counseling programs for students. And in every class, for example, an average of fifty students in a class, when I asked them, how many of you are not good in studies, raise your hands? And you know, out of fifty, thirty-five to forty students are raising their hand that they are not good in studies. And I asked them again, how many of you are not interested in studies? The same number are raising their hands. Therefore, actually, many of our students are not interested in studies. But why are they found in the school is because they are afraid of their parents. They are forced to sit in the classroom. In fact, all are not meant for academics. But my students, what you have to know is that in India, you have to finish at least class twelve by all means, because even if you want to take any profession, that is the least required qualification. So therefore, whether you are good in studies or not good in studies, you have to finish class twelve at least. And today, those are not good in studies. Those are good in, at brains, they are going to get, they are going to become IS officer, IPS officer, MCS or doctors, engineer, the other professions. Those are not good in their brains. What is left to them is their hands and their legs. This is called skill development. That is why sports curriculum is an important part and parcel. Today, earlier we call it extracurricular. Today, we don't call anymore extracurricular, but co-curricular. Extra means outside of curriculum. Co-curricular means part and parcel of the curriculum. So sports has become a co-curricular activity. That means complementary to the curriculum. So therefore, that is why the Catholic School Board of Chiruchanpur is taking it seriously, this sports. And therefore, this morning, I have already told you, my students, you have not come here for enjoyment. There will be joy and happiness in the process, but you have not come here for enjoyment and entertainment. But you have come here to test in what, in what, which area you are good at, your skills, your talents. You have come here to discover that. And therefore, this sports meet is not just an end itself, but this is just a beginning. After discovering in which area, in which field you are good at, you must continue to pursue. Today, you know, sports person, you are a lucky generation. In India itself, there are many opportunities today available, especially in the field of sports. And therefore, I know many of you are not good in studies. And this is the right ground where you have found yourself. And therefore, try out your talents and your skills. And once you have found it, hold on to it, and then make it a career in the future. So today, you have, we are on this Don Bosco Higher Secondary ground. Tomorrow, you will be, you should be, you should find yourself in better grounds in the national level and the international level. So therefore, we are here to encourage you, my dear students, take it seriously. And I wish you all the best. This morning, I have already instructed to you how you should behave and also what is the meaning of sportsmanship? Respecting your opponents, respecting your team and respecting yourself, respecting the umpires, referees and your coaches, and all those are responsible for your growth. This is true sportsmanship. You have not come here to defeat another school. So remember the motto of the Olympics. Sit use, art use, fort use and committer, community. So sit, sit use means what? Fast, faster. Art use means higher. Fort use means stronger. Community means together, team. So therefore, the one who must get the champion should be the fastest one, then the highest one, the strongest one, and those who can work together must get the champion. And those who are the, the fastest, the highest, the strongest, and those who can work together are those who put effort, hard work. Your skill will be seen according to how much energy and effort and hard work you put in. So the one who works, works the hardest must get the first. No, don't try to win by who or by crew. Hoog ya badama say, in Hindi, by who or by crew. This is one of the phrases that I hated most, but I would like to use it. By winning by who or by crew, this is not a good way to win. We must win gracefully. So therefore, my dear students, you are not coming here just to compete, but you are coming here to build your career, your future career. Remember that, keep that in mind. I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you Reverend Father Stephen Dauthang for your valuable speech to all of us. Now may I request the flag bearers to go a little back, only the front commanders, only the commanders, please go a little back. Now we have the aerobics to be presented by the students of Don Bosco Higher Secondary School. Those who are at the back, boys and girls, if you would like to sit down, you can sit down, okay? Relax. Choice is yours. Aerobics to be presented by the students of Don Bosco Higher Secondary School Lamka.
Buddy, you're an old man, poor man, pleading with your eyes, gonna make you some peace someday. You got mud on your face, big disgrace, somebody better put your bag into your place. We will, we will rock you. Sing it. We will, we will rock you.
We'd like to thank our little angels who have come for the aerobics. Let's give them a loud clap. Thank you, little angels, for performing so well. You are really energized, it was very energizing. Thank you so much.
The role of a good leader is not to give greatness to human beings, but to help them extract the greatness they have already inside them. May I now invite our chief guest, Siri S. Kaihupau Ngaithe, MCS, Edisi Mulnuam and SDO in charge Mulnuam Sid Sipur. Let's welcome our chief guest with a round of clap.
I am quite privileged to be a part of these games and sports function. And firstly, I give respect, my respect to our guest of honor, Pu Zuitang Gangte, who happened to be my uncle during infal times. So after a long time, I'm meeting him, so I'm very nostalgic about him meeting here. And also, I give my respect to Reverend Father Stephen Dauthang. Also, I give my respect to Reverend Father Stephen Bayte, principal of this institution. And all the students who are participating in these sports. I am quite happy already when I listen to what our father has just spoken on these co-curricular activities. Earlier, I knew that it was extra. Now I'm the concept. I am convinced and clear that he will guide our student, you, in that direction. And Catholic institution is one of the best institutions who, which produce many, many great peoples in India, not only in India, all over the world. So all the students are privileged to be a part of this institution, is what I feel. And you must be happy, is what I think. Today, in your sports meet, I know who is going to be the winner. I'll guess. The game has not started, but I know who is going to be the winner. Let me give you who is going to be the winner in various games. The winner, the winners which we are going to produce are the one who has patience. All of you are interested in the game, whether football, volleyball, basketball. But the winner is going to be the one who has more patience in that game, is what I predict, and I think it will be correct. Likewise, till class ten, you don't have choice, we don't have choice. You have to go through social studies, science, maths, English. So I request all the students to inculcate interest in the syllabus. Till class ten is the most difficult syllabus. Please remember, till class ten is the most difficult study that you are going to do, because whether you are interested in science or social studies or maths or English, you have to pass. But after class ten, you are free to choose science or arts. So what I predict is that those who square, score sixty and above, now, we don't count sixty, we want you score eighty. now, we don't count 60, we want you to score 80 in your exam minimum. If you can score 80 in each subject in your class 10, up to class 10, you are the best brain, is what I want to say. But in class, after class 10, you are going to choose your line. So in class 11, 12, whatever, after that, you are supposed to score more than 80, is my expectation. I believe students will think in that line that till class 10, whether I am interested, whether I have patience, I have to score at least 80. If you score 80, you are the best brain. But after 10, 11, 12, or whatever higher, you are expected to score more than 80, is what I want to advise. And this is possible because you are going to choose your own subject of interest. No one is going to force you. If you are not interested in science, you can take another subject. So your interest, you are choosing. So I expect you to score more than 80. This is what I want to advise. Likewise, those who have more patience will win the games. While interacting with Reverend Father Stephen Bayte, I wish list many things. Father, why can't we open college? Father, why can't we open hospital? This is my wishful thinking. I think someday, Father will take it up to higher authority and will have more good academic colleges plus health facility in our district. Father, please don't forget that my wishful thinking, someday, you can fulfill in our district. I thought I should bring something. So I bought the best football. I'll give after this inauguration. I want the principal to collect after this inauguration function. The best football, two place, is what I brought for the students. With this, I'll conclude my speech and declare Games and Sport as Open. Let me declare. I declare Catholic School Board Lumka Student Orientation Come Games and Sport Meet 2024 Open.
Give a big round of clap. Thank you, sir, for enlightening us with your words of wisdom and declaring the CSBL Games and Sport Open. Next, we have the Academic Meritorious Award. And may I now invite CSBL Committee to take their time.
I would just like to take a moment on how we have arranged this Academy Meritorious Award. The half-yearly exams were conducted out of 100 marks. And from there, we have selected the best students from each school. And from there, we have selected the highest percentage. So all the schools will not be selected. But the Class 1 to Class 10, those who secured the highest percentage in all these nine schools, they will be awarded. So that's the reason why we have invited the parents and the students. We congratulate their parents for supporting them. And also, a very special congratulation to the students. Wish you better, higher success in life. Thank you. May I now invite Ms. to read out the names of the students. And then I request the teachers to bring the award. And may I also invite the chief guest. Sir, please come and hand over the awards.
Contentions, you can take rest. And you can take rest, you can sit down. These are the list of the awardees. Serial number one, Angela, daughter of Mr. Ashok and Mrs. Lily, Denbasko Higher Secondary School, Salem Veng Lamka. Please, parents, please give a big round of clap.
Let me have the public to read out the memento. Certificate of Excellence, Catholic Schools Board Lumka Merit Certificate. This Academy Meritorious Award is presented to Angela, daughter of Mr. Ashok and Mrs. Lily of Class 1, Section A of Denbasko Higher Secondary School, Salem Veng Lamka, for her outstanding academic achievement in the Inter-Catholic Schools Board Lumka Competition in Class 1, Category 2024. A shining star among peers. We wish her many more success in future. Congratulations, dated 2nd October 2024. Convenor, Catholic Schools Board Lumka, Chur Cham Po Manipur. Thank you.
Next, we have Tangbyak Sang El Ngaithe, son of Jinlal Mun El Ngaithe, and mistress Han Munjing Simteh from Saint Mary's Higher Secondary School, Tuibong. Parents, please, you can accompany your child. Next, Khum Munpari, daughter of Mr. Hem Kopao and mistress Lam Rem Siam from Denbasko Higher Secondary School, Salem Veng Lamka. Next, Haddim Ling Haokip, daughter of Mr. Jong Hotin Sei Haokip and mistress Ning Boy Haokip from Denbasko Higher Secondary School, Salem Veng Lamka. Parents, please accompany. Next, H. Tang Lian Qing, daughter of Dr. H. Gin Tian Muung and mistress H. Wong Ho Kim from Denbasko Higher Secondary School, Salem Veng Lamka. Next, we have Ching Xian Hoi, daughter of D. Pum Zalian and mistress Jin Ho Kim from Saint Teresa School, Tuay Teng Pai. Please keep on clapping your hands. Next, we have Alfred Nogogin Gangte, son of M. Pauline Gangte and mistress Amelia Boisee from Saint Mary's Higher Secondary School, Tuibong. Next, Solomon Do Mun Lian, son of Mr. H. Soi Kholun and mistress Luan Zahad from Saint Teresa School, Tuay Teng Pai. Next, we have Ling Tian Kim, daughter of Mr. D. Tang Minlal Haokip and mistress Nam Ne Hoi from Denbasko School, Ting Gang Pai. Keep on clapping your hands. Next, we have Lambyak Sang, son of Mr. Lal Min Loon and mistress Man Mun Kim from Denbasko Higher Secondary School, Salem Veng. And I would like to acknowledge the last awardees, Lambyak Sang. He is the present school captain of Denbasko Higher Secondary School, Salem Veng. All the awardees, all the awardees along with their parents kindly stay back and then we'll be having photo session after the program. Well, once again, congratulations to all the champions and the achievers. We are moving to the last part of our program. Cultivate a habit of being grateful for every good thing. May I now invite Reverend Sister Mary Clear, head mistress of Denbasko Higher Secondary School, to deliver a word of thanks.
Give thanks to God for all the benefits he has come for to you that you may be worthy to receive more, Sir Saint Louis of France. I would like to express my sincere thanks on behalf of Convenor Reverend Father Louis Kon Sai, Co-Convenor Reverend Father Samuel Nolug, Principals, Headmistresses, Headmasters, Staves, and Students of CSBL. Honorable Chief Guest Pu S. Kaichopao Ngaithe, M.C.S., Functional President Reverend Father Dr. Stephen Towthang, Parish Priest, Good Shepherd Parish, Lamka. Guest of Honor Pu Zuitang Gangte, Executive Retired, First Busconin, First Bad Busconins, Convenor Reverend Father Louis Kon Sai, Co-Convenor Reverend Father Samuel Nolug, Reverend Father Stephen Bayte, Principal and Host of the Event, Principals, Headmistresses, Headmasters of CSBL, Reverend Fathers, Sisters, Chairman of Ching Kong Pang, Student Organizations, PPC, GSPWS, GSPCY Oral Representatives, Special Invites, Teachers, and Myde students. First of all, with due respect, we would like to thank our honorable Chief Guest Pu S. Kaichopao Ngaithe, M.C.S., who spared his busy schedule to grace the occasion. Your kind presence at the inauguration ceremony of Students Orientation Come Games and Sports made us confident. And your inspiring speech which motivated our students. We hope this kindness and cooperation will continue in the future. We are really grateful to you for sacrificing your precious time with us. There's, I on behalf of Principals, Headmistresses, Headmasters, Fathers, Sisters, Staves, and Students of CSBL, extend a big thanks to you. I thank our Functional President Reverend Father Dr. Stephen Towthang, Parish Priest of Good Shepherd Parish, Lamka, for your concern, support, encouragement, and for being with us today. Thank you, dear Father. With deep reverence and love, I express my sincere thanks to our Guest of Honor Pu Zuitang Gangte, Executive Internate Retired, First Bad Busconin, for his active participation in today's event. Sir, you truly made this day beautiful and remarkable, enlightening our students with your words of knowledge and wisdom. Thank you, sir, for your gracious presence with us. I extend my gratitude to our Principal Reverend Father Stephen Bayte, Host of the Event, Convenor Reverend Father Louis Kon Sai, Co-Convenor Reverend Father Samuel Nolug, Principals, Headmistresses, Headmasters of CSBL for planning and leading this event of Students Orientation Come Games and Sports Meet 2024 into reality. Your leadership and motivation are great lesson for all of us. We owe you a lot, dear Fathers and Sisters. Thank you, dear Reverend Fathers, Sisters, and all the special invites. Your valuable presence doubles our joy. Thank you, everyone. We specially thank our photographers, technical team, for your systematic sound system arrangement. We greatly value your service for this event. An event like today cannot happen overnight. The wheels started rolling weeks ago. It requires planning and a bird's eye for detail. We are fortunate enough to be backed by a team of very proactive and dedicated staffs of CSBL under the guidance of Convenor and Vice-Convenor. Thank you, dear teachers, for your untiring efforts. My appreciation and bid congratulations to all the students who participated in different items and who will be participating. Your enthusiasm, interest, hard work, and effort that you put in made a great impact for the smooth functioning of today's event. Once again, thank you, one and all.
On behalf of the organizing committee, I would also like to thank the judges for March Pass competitions, the media, and the 37 ASAM rifles for coming and helping us up.
May I request everyone to stand for the anthem. Please sing loud. Dear boys and girls, please sing loud. Thank you. Started this? Yes. May I request the dignitaries and awardees for the special photo session and the photo booth there, after which we go for a refreshment. Dear boys and girls, now please listen to the announcements. We're going to begin the games, the sports. So, please listen carefully as to who is going to play first and where are you supposed to go. I also request all the teachers to kindly listen to the announcements. And dear teachers, before you go, please come to the announcing booth here and change the ribbon of your name tag. This is the last and final information and request to all the teachers. Please come and change the color of your name tag. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. So, today, the most exciting event is going to begin. And I want you to listen carefully. Football, we have three pools. And Pussey, Saint Joseph Singat, Saint Mary's Tuibong and Saint Peter Tenopel will be playing in Saint Mary's Tuibong ground. So, the first match in Saint Mary's Tuibong ground will be Saint Joseph's. The first match in Saint Mary's Tuibong ground, Saint Joseph Singat versus Saint Mary's Tuibong. And the first match in this Donbosco ground will be DBHS Ting Kong Pai versus Saint Mary's Ve Hien. And for the volleyball, first match for the volleyball, boys, DBHS S. Lhamka versus Saint Joseph Singat in the court one. And girls' volleyball, DBHS S. Lhamka versus Saint Mary's Ve Hien in the court two. And basketball, first match for girls will be DBHS S. Lhamka versus Saint Teresa Tuay Teng Pai. And basketball, first match, Saint Joseph Singat versus Saint Peter Tenopel. Saint Peter Tenopel will be playing first match. Basketball, after which, they have to rush to Saint Mary's Tuibong ground for the second match football. So, the rest of the game, we will let you know later. With these few reminders, wish you all the very best. Thank you.
May I request all the boys to come here, all the boys, only the boys. The girls, please go. All the boys stand according to your school, please stand according to your school. Only the boys, girls, please proceed, please go. The boys, come and stand in line according to your schools. Teachers, please come and change your the ribbon of your name tag so that we come to know who is a teacher and a student.